Seven o'clock, okay. We're all set Tracy, thank you. Good evening everyone, tonight is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board Tuesday, October 28th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We are live at 91 Sawyer Street, Wilcox Commons. You can also reach us on the Zoom platform. Details are on the back, on the second page of the agenda or on Facebook Live. May I have a call to order please?
Paul Grady, present.
David Frog, present.
Julie Rollins, present.
Ellen Marr, present. Like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, as posted, we're going to move into executive session. May I have a motion to do so pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2. The Select Board will conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager. Also pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, 21A1, the Select Board will also discuss, deliberate, and/or take appropriate action with respect to complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Have that motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we plan to return about eight o'clock. Yeah, Mr. Plux has joined us. We will open with public comment and I'm going to recognize Chris Senior.
Okay, is that what, did you think that works now?
Thanks.
The button's on, screen.
Take this.
None of them work.
Not working, not them work. Just, just.
Alright. Technology. I want to thank the board for 12 amazing years of service to the town of Cohasset and officially announce that I will not be seeking a contract renewal. My contract will end. I'm gonna be working with the board and in the capacity to do whatever transitions necessary, but I, I'm excited, I'm wanna be, I'm very grateful for the time that we've all worked together. And, and I'm, and I just wanted to formally say thank you to everybody and, and, and let that announcement be made.
Thank you, Mr. Senior. So we will be working on a transition, you can go, thank you, transition plan and a formal statement to be announced shortly, not this evening, but in the very near future. So with that being said, are there any other public comments? Nope, okay, so what? Okay, so before we begin on the, on public comment, I'd just like to remind everybody that this is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. And would like to keep our public comments to about 15 minutes, so I don't know how many people here are, are looking to say something at, at this, at this point in time tonight. Are we still recording?
Yes, we are, I just wanted to see if we could get the microphones working.
Oh, okay. Like to make sure that the comments are brief and respectful. Name and address, please.
Emma Kegel, 91 Bayview Drive. I'm gonna read the comments that I prepared in advance to this meeting. I moved here in April 2021, thus I appreciate I'm not a lifer or a townie. Contrary to the attitude of some in this town, including those people I mean, being a lifer or a townie does not always bring a better perspective or position to town governance, nor does it mean my voice is unworthy of being heard. Instead, I bring a perspective informed from living in affluent, small suburban Connecticut, an district with blue ribbon schools, immaculately kept long, and envious town facilities, including a town music band show in green, that involve their parade and fireworks as part of the winter festival without cost to the residents. I bring the perspective of living in the otherwise undesired city where the medical capital city was built with major venture capital investment. I bring the perspective of living in a successful, tight knit neighborhood in major cities with high cost to live in like Seattle and Denver. I bring professional, professional credentials and expertise as well as that that could be leveraged by this town. I have offered insight to each of you with knowledge and connections of how to build the town infrastructure in meaningful ways to only be ignored over and over. I brought personal knowledge and advocacy about the fact that despite the voluminous spending on IT in this town, the meetings were and remain not to be ADA compliant to those attended remote and for many in person, making attendance discouraging at best due to the lousy acoustics. I pleaded because it affected me with my own deafness, but it also affected my neighbors who relied on or appreciated the use of captioning and better AV. I was ignored over and over. I was humiliated as I turned to you, my neighbor, begging for help and I brought to you state resources to improve, which you ignored too. And so various state agencies got involved, but the response they got was, they say they know better than all of us combined. My communication with Chris Senior and his IT guru were insulting and gaslighting to the extent about playing games about whether or not captioning was turned on or off. I had active email arguments with Ms. Mayor that belittle me, belittle my disability and my understanding of the need of how to accommodate the hearing disabled. And the rest of you, except for you, Ms. Ballen, bore witness in thus a just as complicit in my mind. I tried talking to most of you one to one, then in larger communication, illustrating issues that are consistently being brought before you, whether disability discrimination, elder affairs fiasco, HR ineptitude, town manager Chris Senior, performance issues and communication failures, needs to work with residents around major projects and be responsive and transparent to the town. I volunteered and was ignored. I brought the willingness to be a sitting duck to retaliation by advocating on behalf of preserved tenants at the request of Paul Grady, who then pretended to be a hero, all the while demonstrating he never even read the report and he took credit for the work of town employees who tried to address the massive errors of Chris Senior in this board. I also constantly advocated on social media to be openly ridiculed and insulted by each of you in your inner circle, calling me names and insulting my career in intelligence. I have found it fascinating that each of you and the town manager constantly argue open meeting law prevents you from responding or engaging with constituents, but then fragrantly communicating with some. Obviously, your communications and behaviors are disproportionate and aggressively hostile to anyone who does not share your position or support you in entirety. This modus operandi by several of you is to create hysteria and personal character attacks about anyone who speaks up. At this juncture, the open hostility of several on this board, that mind you are recorded and memorialized in concrete evidence toward many in this town, has resulted in a tremendous loss of trust and confidence by the majority of its constituents. You like to respond to this criticism with volunteers show up at meetings. The reality is people are scared. People are scared because they see how they treat residents. They see and know the toxic workplace too many town employees have and continue to experience. They have seen the hypocrisy, they have seen people fear impacts to their businesses in town, they have even seen the tagging employers behavior on social media, they have seen the nasty language and the us versus them dynamic that you have intentionally created as red herring. We have seen some of the same leaders recycle through over and over and be complicit in ongoing injustices to residents in our community, whether it be those who are low income disabled, those who are children, those who serve us in official roles in the town and more. Cohasset is long overdue for change and that change must come from within. I request and support the termination of the contract non renewal of Chris Senior. I request Ms. Mayor and Mr. Grady step down immediately. I request the rest of you, Chris Plux, David Frog, and Julie Rollins, please think about whether or not you are here to represent constituents, and if you are, please get to work. Whoever serves this town needs to be ready to do some real hard and tough work, and that is not pushing paper through man flaining to the public while patting themselves on the back.
Nick Ferencana, 55, Red Gate Lane. I am going to slightly adjust my comments in light of recent events, so if I, if I have to adjust it on the fly, I apologize for, for a brief pause. I address this board at the meeting on September 30th. At that meeting, I expressed concerns about governance of this town and the credibility of the, of the board itself as a result of recent events, in particular, the process for the proposed public safety building. Later in that meeting, I also spoke about the concern of growing administrative budgets after a presentation by a fellow resident highlighted some of those issues as well and stated that it would be nice to have an explanation to understand why that is the case. When I later read the minutes for the meeting, minutes that were approved by the members of this board, I was surprised to see that they were, that they materially misrepresented my comments before this board in a rather egregious way. To be clear, this was not a minor tweaking or admission due to the process of summarizing commentary. No, this was a deliberate effort to sanitize the record in a way that removed any criticism of the board itself or the town manager and did so in a manner that materially altered the substance so dramatically that the document should be considered fraudulent. That was quite surprising as I've never even heard of this being a problem anywhere, be with corporate boards, government, that it was inconceivable to me. Filing official minutes of meetings that don't comport with realities antithetical to the most foundational principles of good governments and should never be tolerated. This is the type of thing I'd expect in Soviet Russia, we don't do this in America. It is a clear violation of Section 22 of the open meeting law, and as the chair, here's the formal complaint for that. Unfortunately, this is a recurring issue for this board. Earlier this year, a previous member of this board raised these exact same concerns in another meeting. From the minutes of that meeting, Jack Creighton, who's a prior member of the Select Board, stated that the minutes of, of the 102924 meeting have very little relationship to what transpired at that meeting. The people in this town deserve accurate minutes, if you look at the actual recordings, you'll find that these minutes are not accurate. He went on to say, "They are puff pieces and nice things being said about certain people, but criticisms and outbursts are not in there." We have a problem that the official minutes that are being voted on are incorrect, inaccurate, and self-serving. They are corrupt and dishonest, the citizens of this town deserve honest, open government, and that is being denied. Obviously, those comments stood out. As I was curious to observe for myself, the, the events that were referenced in those comments, I would encourage every member of this town, every resident of this town to go see for themselves what I'm talking about and see if the agenda or the minutes of that meeting comport to reality. I can assure you, it is a drastic departure and it is alarming. Perhaps we will, we will clip some of those videos and make them more accessible and so people can, can see. What I saw was a shocking display of a board totally unable to function and a town manager who was completely unhinged. If this board had any self-respect, that would have been the town manager the last day on the job. I would commend Mr. Frog for trying to do the bare minimum in the legal obligations and the process. I have no doubt, I am aware that there was a certain context to that meeting and it, without having all the details, I think there was, there likely was a issue with another board that needed to be ferreted out. And there was a, indeed, as prescribed in the regulations, a obligation that Mr. Frog was trying to fulfill and was meeting with stiff resistance from three fifths of this board, again, who acted like they'd be more at home in Soviet Russia. And his attempt to ascertain basic facts caused this board to go into a total meltdown. That is not hyperbole. The town manager acted like he was above answering basic questions and stated, as a direct quote, "I will not be questioned about facts. Call me old fashioned, but I'd consider that type of statement to be entirely disqualifying for public service as any type of official, be it the dog catcher or town manager." This is, uh, what was shocking about that is how it was totally unnecessary, none of it was necessary if people acted like adults and checked their egos and decided to act like they were doing a public service instead of putting their egos first, and that, that's a very apparent what is happening here. And the reason I recount that issue is because I, I believe that that is at the heart of what is continuing to plug this, I think we have a crisis of government in this town. I think you took a good first step today, but I would implore you, I, I, I do not think that solves the issue by any stretch of the imagination. I think there tends to be an instinctive allergy to, to mild criticism or feedback of any type. And given, I would hope that you can understand that when, when, when I see things like criticisms being literally deleted from the record, which should never happen in America, that is like chumming the water for a shark and I'm going to get to the bottom of it and I'm gonna assume that you are up to no good, as I should and as my, my fellow residents should. There's absolutely no excuse for that. The, I would hope that you would solicit feedback, have some introspection, and be a little more thoughtful going forward when, when considering how to right the ship here. When it comes to the public safety building, I think that's what's been missing from this process. I get the sense that there seem, based on comments from members of this board as well as documents that have been obtained in, in Freedom of Information requests, that this board seems to think that there is a communications problem or a messaging problem. I can assure you that that is not the case, it is a substance problem. The more, in fact, the more members of this board talk about this, the, the less, the little support that exists erodes even further. That is not an accident. I came to this issue with an open mind. I was, wanted to understand, when the cost tripled, how did we get to this point? I saw some extraordinarily diligent work by residents whose job it is not, it's not included in their job description to do this, they were being good neighbors as far as, as I'm concerned. And I saw a lot of nonsense, frankly, from people sitting on that side of the table, and it was, it was alarming. The, what I did not see a single item of, and in, I would be, if I, I cannot say that I've gone through 100% of the past meetings, but I, I'm getting there, and I've yet to encounter a single instance of a probative question that was attempted to analyze the situation, correct course, assess where we got there. Frankly, there was a lot of nonsense, BS, self-congratulatory silliness, and really, like, nothing to indicate that this board was serious about doing its job. Nothing, not a single thing. I saw, when the, when the price of a project to that extent is tripled, and at the next meeting, Paul Grady is talking about, let me correct myself, for the next three, three instances it's discussed, is talking about how the price of public safety is, or can you put a price on public safety and refer to it as priceless? Sure, that is, like, that's a conversation I had with my daughter at the arcade, not a government official trying to supervise a multi, tens of millions of dollar building project, that is like beneath the dignity of, of what you need to be doing here. By that logic, let's get some like Black Hawk helicopters and do medevacs, like, if price is not an issue. Right? Because that's not a serious discussion, we need to have a serious discussion. You're not having that. What I, when, when you don't have that, on the tails of that, that type of increase, people are, are alarmed and they're gonna inherently reject any, anything that you try to do. At this point, I don't, I think you have a 0% chance of accomplishing anything going forward, and that is a problem. I happen to agree that there needs to be a public safety building. I think there are certain members of this board that need to resign in order to make that happen. So if you care about the town, which people claim to do, I would encourage you to ponder how we got to this point and how we move forward. Because I can assure you that, Paul, I think you are, if not the strongest advocate among the most, the stronger advocates for that building, there's an inverse relationship. The more you talk about it, the less support there is. I would encourage you to reflect on that, why that's the case. I think people of this town have given you feedback, you guys responded to that feedback by pulling it off of the ballot. It's not because we need more propaganda, we need a better process, that should be abundantly clear. If that is not clear to people, and, and I will generalize that comment, your process for engaging with residents of this town, if I, like, the, the next step is going to be recall elections. I will knock on every single door in this town and alert them to the dishonesty, dissemblance, and utter silliness emanating from this board if I have to. I would like nothing more than to sit back and let you guys do your thing, but unfortunately, given the, the lack of seriousness and adult behavior emanating from this board, I feel obligated to provide the supervision that you guys are failing to provide. Thank you.
Jennifer Chu, I'm from 25 Virginia Lane, and I would like to start out by saying that like my peers who have spoken already, from Invest in the Cohasset Coalition and other people around town, we are all in favor of a well-designed and modern public safety building. We are all in favor of improvements to Elm Street for use by the fire department. We are all in favor of a new or dramatically overhauled middle or, and high school. We are all in favor of improvement and replacement of the town hall, or replacement of the town hall, and we are all in favor of free full day kindergarten for students as part of the town budget, which is in line with 95% of the other communities in Massachusetts. Unfortunately, it's hard to see how any of that is possible with Chris Senior in place, so we are very grateful that he is not. We don't know where that decision came from, but if you all had anything to do with it, it was a wise decision. The fact is that the $10.4 million budget that was presented for approval to the town without consulting with the police department about their needs and against the recommendation of well-qualified members of the citizens advisory board is absolutely egregious. And I know that at least three members of this current board voted for it. It is, at worst, reckless, and at worst, I mean, it's just absolutely egregious. The presentation of a need for an additional $18 million in funds to be absorbed by the residents of this town, including all of you, with no plan to secure state or federal assistance, compounds the insult and injury to every member of this community. So with that in mind, I no longer have to call for Chris Senior to resign, which was my intention today, but I would urge the rest of you on the board, who have thus far not acted in the best interest of the town, to consider whether your role remains wise to achieving all of the goals that we share. So as soon as a new town manager is in place, our recommendation is that he or she can design a comprehensive solution to meet all of the town's needs, along with proposals on how to secure state and federal funding and potential financing options for the litany of the projects that have been put on hold for many generations and are now sitting in our laps. Thank you.
Hity Dugan, 100 Black Rock Road, I'd just like to offer a slightly different perspective. I appreciate that you have taken a tough decision tonight, and we don't know the details behind it, but we now have a chance to sort of reset. I like to say that I've worked with every single individual member of this board and appreciate what they contribute to the community. They are citizens, they are community members, and then they are our neighbors, and I start there in terms of building relationships, and I know that all of them are accessible and will pick up phone calls, will respond to emails, and so I understand that people have had different experiences, that has not been my experience at all. And in fact, I know for a fact the amount of hours that each of these individuals puts into this community. I do want to reflect on the fact that we as a community have an inflection point, because if we think that our behavior tonight relative to Chris Senior and this board is going to allow us to attract an attractive town manager, then we are out of our minds. We need to calm down and come together as a community, because guess what? The town managers that are applying for this position are going to look at meetings like this and reflect where they want to join a community. So I really think we need to pause and all reflect as to how we are going to behave in order to attract the right kind of candidate. And I don't think that calling for the resignation of the Select Board and then going out into the market and asking for a new town manager is gonna result in a positive result for this community. So I, again, thank you for your service, but I do want to add a little bit of a different perspective here in that I think we need to take the temperature down and, and allow what our volunteers here and volunteers in other communities, committees to continue to work on public safety, there's a lot of comments about that, and I think that you guys have a plan and have a vision for where the working group is going to be going with the next version. And again, us feeding ourselves up publicly is not going to serve us when we are going out in the market to recruit new talent to help manage this town. Thank you.
Is there any more? Okay, one more. Thank you.
Cassandra Draggin Arshambo, 290 Beechwood Street. When a town accepts a resignation, it also reveals its values. The departure of the town manager, Chris Senior, is not just the end of a contract, it's the beginning of a reckoning. For years, residents have watched patterns of opacity, conflicts of interest, and shifting narratives erode public trust. Each time the public asked for accountability, we were met with silence, deflection, or carefully managed PR instead of honest answers. This resignation is not merely an administrative event, it's a moral opportunity. The Select Board now has the chance to show that Cohasset's government will no longer tolerate leadership defined by opacity, inconsistency, and a failure to serve the public interest. What happens next will define us. Will we repeat the same patterns under a new name, or will we insist that transparency, competence, accountability, and good faith guide every decision from here forward? This moment is not about personalities, it's about the principles, and Cohasset belongs to its citizens, not to the small circle that has managed to keep power no matter the results. Let's make this a turning point and one that renews our collective integrity. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tarpe. And then, okay.
Good evening, Antarctic, 12 Main Street. I don't have any prepared remarks, I didn't plan to speak. But I do take issue with some of the speeches that have been given here tonight. I was asked to join the group that started planning the public safety building. I joined it pretty soon after it got started, and I was at every meeting and present during the hundreds of decisions that were made. At every point, both the Select Board and the two chiefs, the emergency maintenance, emergency support people looked to keep the cost down. I know that initially, there was some figure of $10 million or something like that thrown out there. Nobody believed that was accurate. A review of any of the public safety projects in the area that have occurred over the last several years will tell you that. The price of the public safety building is not going to go down. It has been managed very, very carefully, and I don't see any way that we could reduce the, the cost of the public safety building, having been involved. And I was, I was asked again to be a part of the group as a known conservative. I have spoken at town meeting a number of times about issues that I didn't like, spoken respectfully, I hope, but this particular issue, this particular initiative, the public safety building. But this particular issue, uh, this particular initiative, the public safety, uh, building, uh, was managed correctly. Albeit, there was one small mistake. Somebody came out with a ten million dollar figure early on, and that was dismissed and apologized for. Uh, and nobody believes, nobody involved with this project on a day-to-day basis beyond those people on one four three believed that it was going to be ten million dollars. Again, take a look at all the public safety projects the last several years in the area. It's going to be what it is, no more, no less. I would like to commend the select board. I wouldn't have your job for all the team in China. I don't know how you're doing. I'm honest with you. I found that you've always had the best interests of the town at heart. I have not agree with you on every occasion, but there's no question in my mind uh, that you folks put in a ton of effort. Um, you try to do the absolute best you can for the town, and you're challenged with a whole bunch of different things at this point. And it's only going to get worse as we look to the future. We look at the schools, the roads, and the other things we have to deal with. So I was proud that you asked me to be part of the public safety initiative. I was proud to, I'm very proud to work with you. I hope to continue, uh, to work with you in the next iteration. For those who are worried about that, uh, that group has been reconfigured uh, to include people who have perhaps different viewpoints uh, on how the project should proceed, and they're coming together. And that'll all be sorted out in the best interest of the town. Again, I apologize, don't prepare remarks, but I just want to. But you always felt, thank you.
Thank you. One more, come on up.
Hi, my name is Catherine Roth, and I live at two oh nine A Sawyer Street. Um, I would like to start off with, um, so I grew up here, and I've been back for fifteen years now. Um, I would like to thank David Farag and his mom. I'm a single mom, and when they opened up the, um, Cub Scouts for Girls, um, they helped me get a scholarship so I didn't have to pay for anything. And so I would like to thank you for that. And that is, so my child is seventeen, and that is being a single mom in in this community. I did not want to be back here. And, um, I would not do activities in Cohasset for like the first year. And I just found everyone warm and welcoming. Um, and the town politics now, um, sorry, I have major anxiety about public speaking. So, um, but so, um, I lived at Avalon for twelve years. And one of, I'm, and I don't know, I could be incorrect, but I remember reading in the Mariner that, um, that part of the contract for Avalon coming in was they they owed, um, Cohasset a sidewalk on three I where Avalon is. And I don't know, and I know now the sidewalk on three I is now. And so it is my understanding that they gave Cohasset money for a sidewalk. And that is just, um, that is something because what Avalon has been here, I think, for fourteen years. I'm not, well, yeah. So so that is just more kind of as as a resident, I would like to know where money is going. Like, did the town get money for a sidewalk that never got put in on three I? So, thank you very much.
We'll get back to you. If you can, um, email Tracy Connors with your contact info, we'll give you an answer to that. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We will move on with our agenda. Um, we have our Veterans Day observance at Veterans Memorial Park Tuesday, November eleventh. Um, I understand our VSO Phil Mahoney is not here, um, this evening, but this is a pretty standard, um, event. It's quite moving. It starts at eleven, um, at the memorial park and it will, uh, which is at Two Border Street. Um, we encourage everyone who can go to go. I know, uh, Mr. Mahoney is looking for someone who might want to speak from the select board. Are there any volunteers to speak?
We have the day off, I think, for Veterans Day.
Yeah, I'm working, but I could take the day off, but if you would like to.
Yeah, I'll be around.
Okay, so is everyone okay with Mr. Farag if he speaks at? It's it's, um.
November the eleventh, Tuesday.
Tuesday, the eleventh. Okay, so Mr. Farag can just prepare, you know, some some comments. You've been to many of these, you know, the tone and tenor. Um, and and all of us, all of the community is welcome to go to that. Um, next up is a one-day liquor license for CSCR, their open house event on Saturday, November eighth. Um, I don't know if we have Chief Quigley on the line, but it seems. Okay, he's he's getting promoted.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. We did touch base with Jack Buckley, and, um, this is really an inside event and should be no impact at all. Um, but, um, would would recommend this be approved.
Okay, great. Um, so does any anyone on the board have any questions? No, okay, can I have a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for CSCR open house event on Saturday, November eighth? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up is the South Shore Community Center Santa Coming by Boat event on November twenty ninth. This is a pretty standard event. It's been going on for over thirty years, I know.
Yep, correct, uh, day after Thanksgiving. Um, we have a standing plan, and we recommend that this be, um, approved.
Okay, any questions? No, okay, so can I have a motion to approve South Shore Community Center Santa event on November twenty ninth? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up is the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Stroll Event, Saturday, December thirteenth. Do we have someone?
Yes.
Okay, please come on up.
Sean Cunningham, forty-eight Jerusalem Road Drive, active member of the Cohasset Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we, basically, we've done a twenty-year-plus event in the village. Um, we're just really looking just to duplicate exactly what we did last year, uh, in years prior. Um, there was an edit, I let Tracy know this morning, on the Times. We moved it up by a half hour, four thirty to seven thirty, and that's exactly what we did last year. I had originally five to eight.
Five to eight, all right.
Yeah, so we just want to make that one edit. Um, yeah, and that's all. It's really the same people involved in it, all the businesses in town. It's usually a fun event, safe event. Um, yeah.
Okay, and and chief, any any changes? It seems like it's a pretty well-oiled event.
No.
With the street closures and.
It this is a great event. We will we'll fine tune this with Sean and, um, and, um, Larry Cofell, um, in the next, in the next few days. But, uh, standard event, it it it's a great event, a lot of fun, and, um, we we recommend it be approved, and also an entertainment license on this one as well.
Oh, entertainment, okay. Thank you, thank you for that reminder, okay. All right, so, um, may I have a motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Stroll Event for Saturday, December thirteenth, four thirty to seven thirty?
I'll vote.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to approve an entertainment license for the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Stroll Event for Saturday, December thirteenth?
I'll vote.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I just have one other request was, um, normally, since this is all paid for by the merchants in the town, can we waive the fees like we've done in years past?
I think so, everyone.
An application fee, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that include the detail fees?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, admin fees for details. It's a ten percent surcharge for the details. We usually waive that.
Oh, okay. Not the not the detail itself, it's just the surcharge fee.
It's the surcharge, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, so the application fee and the surcharge fee for the details will be waived. Is that correct?
Yes, that'd be perfect for us.
Okay.
Yep.
Ye- yes. So can I have a motion to approve the waiver of the application fee and the surcharge fee for this detail?
I'll vote.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set.
Very much, okay.
Thank you. And finally, we have a one-day liquor license request from the Cohasset Youth Lacrosse Group from Untold Brewery. Um, actually, the application, I think, came in from Untold Brewery. Is that correct, chief?
Yes, they're they're very, we we work with them several times a year, very professional, never a problem. And we recommend this be, um, approved.
Okay, so this is their Lacrosse Giving event on Saturday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the Cohasset Sports Complex from one to four P M. Um, does anyone have any questions?
No.
No, so can I have a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Cohasset Youth Lacrosse Untold Brewery?
So I'll vote.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you, thank you, chief. I'd just like to put a plug out that, I mean, our our application guidelines ask for sixty days. Notice, I noticed that some of these are a little tight, um, in terms of the approval and and the event time. So, um, as we cycle through this, you know, going in into more events, let's just remind everyone, if you have, if you're looking for an event application, please try to get it to us, um, with enough time. Thank you. Okay, next up. Thanks, chief. Next up is a town hall project update.
So, as everyone knows, um, in March, we accepted a renovation project for a town hall. Um, a new budget was formed based on prior bids that we received. Um, we brought the project value down to just do the items that are most necessary for, um, a workable town hall. Um, we started the process, and to date, we have fire suppression being worked on now. Um, we received bids on that project. We allocated a four hundred thousand dollar amount to that specific project. Um, I can tell you, we came in sixty-two thousand dollars under what the allocation was. The water line is in place, that was the work that was being done in front of town hall. Um, and they started working on the fire suppression and alarms, um, last week. They're starting in the basement, and they're moving their way out. Um, the next item that was completed was the chimney, um, needed some repointing. Um, and that was completed last week. On the value of that was about thirty-nine thousand dollars. That was money that was left over from the roof project to complete the chimney. We still do have additional funds left in that line, I would love. Um, we are, we've gone out to find quotes for the hazmat abatement. Um, we have a fifty thousand dollar price tag on that. We've received two quotes so far, um, the lowest quote being seven thousand dollars. So either way, the third quote, we'll see what it comes in at. Um, but right now, seven thousand dollars seems to be the price tag, so we're saving forty-three thousand dollars on that one. Um, we do have designer services on the street now. There's an R F Q that's been published. Um, those are due back November twelfth. Um, we have a not to exceed there a hundred thousand dollars for the design component. They'll help design the window specifications. Um, they'll also help with space planning, um, the the porch and any ADA compliance challenges that the building may have. As soon as the designer is on board, we will go ahead and put out an R F P for the windows. Um, and subsequently, we will also put out an R F P for the, um, H V A C. The design for the H V A C was completed last week, so we're reviewing that. But until the designer's on board, we don't want to really, um, do any more with that H V A specification to make sure that it matches our planning. Um, because there's no point in going much a bit on something. Um, also, the windows have to be in place before we can start the H V A C. Um, and that is so we can maximize our rebates with National Grid. So it, the project's moving along nicely. Um, you may not see any movement on the exterior of the building until likely March, when the windows are being installed. And then the interior of the building, you'll you'll see the H V A C soon thereafter. Um, so things are moving along nicely. Um, and as soon as the windows and the H V A C are are out on the street, then we'll start moving along with some of these other items, which are interior flooring, doors, painting, and things like that.
Great. Thank you. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions? Mr. Farag?
Uh, the only comment I would have is that it's great to see that this project obviously was, um, you know, paid for and is moving forward, and the the bids seem to be coming in under for at least some of the items. Uh, but I would let people know that, um, one of the things that's different from doing it now as opposed to twenty years ago is that the building code has been updated since that time. So when they're getting the windows, they have to be, um, you know, hurricane resistant because of, because of the proximity of town hall to the water, um, which people forget how close it is to the, you know, to the ocean and the and the inner harbor of that portion there. So, um, so, but it will be strong enough to to stand up for for years to come. So it looks like the project's moving along swimmingly at this point, so we'll keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully it'll keep going the same way. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Just want to say thank you to Michelle for the update. A lot of detail in there, so appreciate keeping tabs on the project for us.
Great. Is there anything?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for all your work on this over a very long period of time. Thank you.
Okay. Great, okay, uh, next up, one thirty-five King Street update.
Good evening, Glenn.
Address, sorry. Address.
Uh, King Street Cohasset.
Thank you.
So, uh, at the last, uh, a few meetings ago, uh, the the board pulled the article for the public safety billing from the warrant and asked that we, uh, set up a committee, uh, with additional citizens. And that has been done. We've added, uh, four new, um, citizens. One is Will Ashton from Bone Street. Other is Doug McGregor from Border Street. Another, Melissa Brown from Linden Dry. Another Nate Spader from Beverly Lane. They all have backgrounds that can be very helpful as, uh, at this project a little closer going forward. Uh, capital budget representative is Kathy Forrest, and the advisory board representative is Mark Cameron. We've set up a schedule to meet almost every week between now and the end of the year. We've met twice since, uh, we were given this new charge. And our, uh, focus now is we have decided that we're going to set up a new, uh, communication with the community, tell them exactly what our current public safety situation is and how we got to where we are. Uh, we've taken down from the website all the information that used to be up about the previous building. Um, and we're starting fresh with a whole new, uh, approach to communicating. We think that in early November, we'll have our first public forum, and it'll be more of a, uh, instead of just trying to pitch a project, but to say, what do you think? What do you know, want to hear? So it's going to be a listening. Uh, we think that, um, that'll be in early November, or sometime in November. Information, uh, will be out, uh, very soon, uh, with the new information, the new websites, the new voter, um, information pack, those kind of things. And our goal will be to have something ready for a town meeting in twenty-six. Wh- whether we can make it at the regularly scheduled April or May is yet to be seen. Uh, but a lot of good discussion has been had, information is coming in. So we think we'll have good encouraging reports as we go ahead over the next weeks and months.
Excellent, thank you. Questions?
The only comment I had, it's more of a common thank you for taking this on and all the, uh, new members, uh, who stepped up to the plate to help out with this. Um, but the only thing I would say, I just speak for myself, not for the other members, but with any iteration of what's going to happen with the safety buildings, I would, I I would state that we need to get that second ambulance, uh, up and running. And and ready to go, whether it, wherever it may be placed, uh, because of the needs of the the future of the town. So that that hopefully any design, um, is going to include that that second ambulance isn't behind town hall, but it's finding a new home somewhere. Correct. We think that the new look is going to be a comprehensive public safety overlook, police, fire, second ambulances, the whole, the whole thing. And maybe we had our, uh, uh, we made up our mind too early as to what we were going to do without really hearing and looking at a lot of things. We've gotten some very interesting information from, uh, the fire department on how they respond to each type of call that comes in and the different stabbing things. And it's easy for people to say, what about, what about, you have those people. But every, those trucks, when they roll out, there's a plan as soon as they get to the end of the driveway. It's not, it's not just, you know, so, uh, we think we're, uh, on our way. Appreciate it.
Next.
Just want to say thank you, you personally, for taking this on and helping lead it forward. You understand the sensitivity around the project, I'm sure. So, uh, appreciate you stepping up and helping to lead.
Thank you.
I look forward to new updates and and progress.
Um, right, um, will come as often as we, you ask us, or if we have things that we definitely want to make sure we get out there, we'll see if we can get on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, next up is special town meeting discussion vote of any remaining articles. Um, I believe there are two that we were going to defer until special town meeting. The first is Article eleven lease of so, uh, school property for citing of a solar power electric generation facility. This is actually just a renewal of of previous votes, uh, of the town. Um, since the warrant was. Um, since the warrant was printed, advisory has voted to, uh, recommend. Um, and I apologize, I don't have their, their votes, but I think it was fairly, oh, thank you, Chris, it eight to one and school committee voted. Wrong article. It's, it's the, um, eleven.
Oh, I was one ahead, sorry.
One ahead.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not there yet, sorry. But, but I'm, I, I, I know that advisory voted, uh, to recommend and school committee also voted to recommend both. So, we can either wait until special town meeting, uh, to vote, or we can vote on it tonight. Um, if you had a chance to see any, either one of those meetings, Ms. Modell, who's the chair of the AEC, gave very comprehensive, presentations on it. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Just briefly, uh, I've heard the presentation a couple of times now. It's pretty conclusive at this point that solar makes a lot of sense for environmental and economic reasons. So I'm comfortable voting on this now. I'm also comfortable waiting until special town meeting to vote on it. Uh, but, uh, it sounds like a good, good project to continue pursuing.
Yeah, so if, if we vote on it tonight, it will get in the motions that get distributed at town meeting. So when people are looking through the motions on the floor, you know, before we begin, they'll be able to see our intent at that point. Um, so I would say we, we vote for it unless there's any strenuous objection.
Yeah, I got a, just a quick comment. I, I think it's really important because the, the biggest buildings that we have in the town are the schools by far, square footage wise. And with the utility costs going up and up and up, um, the schools need help and we need to help them out as much as we can to figure out what, what ways can we contain costs? What way can we save on costs? And one of them is the utility costs. And so even though this is just, this just authorizes it, there's more work to be done. Um, this is certainly the, the first step to, to do it. And with it, with the school roof on the Ozarks is going to be done. Um, you know, it should be hopefully in a short time after that, that they, they can look forward to, you know, try and get the savings and, and, you know, being more green and getting the schools up to date. And then hopefully the dear hill and eventually the high school after that, because, um, you know, the, the, and, and the, the costs, like I said, if you look at the trajectory over the next five or ten years of what the, of what the, the, the cost of electricity, gas and everything is going to be, I mean, it's going to be a straight lineup. So we have to have a, a plan with the schools on, on what to do about that. So I couldn't, I, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. All right, so may I have a motion then to recommend to a town meeting for Article eleven lease of school property for citing of a solar power electric generation facility?
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And Michelle, we'll make sure we get these votes to, um, town council for the motions. Thank you. Okay, and then the last one is Article twelve, the citizens petition for tuition-free full-day kindergarten. Um, advisory committee voted to not recom- recommend by a vote of eight to one. School committee voted to not recommend by a vote of four zero one. Um, our, what's in the warrant is recommendation at special town meeting. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this?
I would be fine voting tonight since we've heard from school committee.
Okay.
I would be fine doing that tonight.
Okay. Okay, um.
I don't know how others feel.
Yeah, Mr. Farag?
Uh, I think we can vote tonight, uh, for sure.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to see, I mean, the, the only, the issue I have with is that it, it, in order to get full-day kindergarten implemented, I'm for working with the school committee to do that and to see budget-wise where that can be done so it can be fit in. But, um, and then for a long-term basis of it, uh, and then this, you know, gets at just this, this year because of everything that happened beforehand, so. I'm in favor of looking for the long-term, uh, placement of kindergarten for our schools, full day, that is.
Right, right, and, and I, I don't want to speak out of turn on this. I think, Mr. Grady, you were at school committee that, you think, when the petitioner is presented?
Was.
Yeah, with, with myself, and I think the school committee, um, and for those of you who were there, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think they were open to FY twenty-seven conversations about how to, how to, you know, uh, implement, um, it, it's really half, half-day kindergarten, because, um, the half-day is mandated by the state, free half-day in the morning, um, so it, it's really the afternoon sessions. Um, but they didn't make a commitment that if the money were voted on, um, that it could, it would be used for these refunds. Um, yes?
Thank you. Jennifer Chu, twenty-five Virginia Lane. And I think precisely because they did not make a commitment to use that money for the funds, the town votes on it, is imperative that this ends up on ballot for this year where the citizens can vote and they can see what their elected officials are choosing to do when they have a directive from the community. Makes it even more important.
Okay. She'd like it included in the, in the warrant presented at town. Yes, of course, yeah. Well, you haven't withdrawn it, so it would be. Oh, absolutely. Unless you withdraw it, it will be on the warrant, is my understanding.
Well, well, it, it is on the warrant. The warrant, the warrant has been mailed to the town. There, there's no, there's no ballot after special town meeting this, this year. So when you, when you say the ballot, to me, that means a vote in.
Yes, I do want it. If you guys are electing whether you're going to support that, I think that you supporting it is also showing good faith, that you are listening to the community, that we have more than the necessary signatures. And by the way, none of us who initiated this have anything to gain by this. I have a fourth grader, so I think it's really important that you guys put it out there because why should one year of students be taxed exorbitantly as compared to all of the pairs or pairs around them? And so if you support it, you show that you all are listening to what the community is telling you.
Okay.
Or not, as the case may be.
I think another hand up before.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, well, there you go.
Okay, I think, you know, I, I, I think it's, um, it's, it's a, it's a challenging topic in the sense of, and, and, and I know you understand, but I'm just going to say it for, for the record, is that the select board doesn't have any purview on the school committee budgeting, and you're nodding, so, so you're aware of that. And, and all, all we approve really is, is the top-line number that go, that goes to the schools. It, it's their, it's their purview. Um, it's also legally, I, I don't believe that, um, they, they have to adhere to.
You're correct.
This vote, right.
Which means that us knowing where they stand and you're supporting us knowing where they stand is more important than ever. So you are correct. We might all find as a community that they're going to do what they want to do, not what the community is calling for them to do. And we need to know that. So we need your support to put that in front of them and find answers.
Mr. Flex?
So, my personal perspective, and I'm putting a target on my back by saying this, so have at it. It, the petition acknowledges that free cash is for contingencies. So, if this proposal were out there saying we want to, uh, find new funding, which may include a tax increase for this, that I think I would support. But taking it out of the contingency fund, I have a hard time with because it's a contingency fund and this to me is not a contingency.
I know this is.
No back and forth.
Wait, wait, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, now, Miss, I'm sorry, Miss Latanzi, um, Ms. Stugan had her hand up. I know you, she's behind you.
I just want to make clear that the revised informational summary for the citizens petition does request the funds to come out of free cash flow.
Yeah.
It certified free cash flow of one point two million, of which we are appropriating six hundred and thirty-eight thousand if everything passes at special town meeting, that leaves us six hundred thousand. If the RTF fails, that we will have to fund the budget gap out of the cap of that's another three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. At that point, we are running out of free cash flow to be able to even support or consider doing that three hundred thousand if not being requested. On top of the fact that it violates our financial management policies, which are very clear in how we actually use. And if you actually look at state guidance, they are requiring and looking at communities where they are actually using all their free cash flow and not reserving a specific percentage in order to be able to utilize for those emergencies and even undesigned upon balance that is at an appropriate level. So I don't feel comfortable us as living it as part of the community, with one point, one point two million, which is a number that most community members don't know. Subtracting out six hundred thousand, which again, most community members are not going to do the math in the warrant, giving us six hundred thousand dollars, then having a conversation on the floor of town meeting about RTF, which may not pass another four hundred thousand dollar hit to a free cash flow, and then having this conversation. That's not how budgeting and how the financial management works. Why this should be a FY twenty-seven conversation, not an opening of FY twenty-six?
Thank you. Ms. Latanzi, did you want to say something?
I mean, I.
Name, name an address, please.
And I appreciate Katie Duncan's, um, explanation there on where this whole free cash stuffs and just, you know, overall status for all the things that are pressing in this town right now. I completely appreciate that. Um, but this, for what you're about to either endorse or not endorse is bigger than this instance of this moment in time. It's a single signal to the school community that the, the town is asking for something that was already promised, that was taken away. And so it's representative of something so much more, and it's a point of inflection for outreach frontlines to the people, and that's what this represents. It's not just a one-off dollar amount request to reimburse folks that are out money. So I just, I want that to be made known, and it was also the beginning of a lot of citizens, um, just wanting to be in, involved in this dialogue and being more involved in the community. And I would hate for that to be just cast to the side for this instance right here of thinking about all of these other items that Katie Duncan just brought up, which I totally appreciate and understand. But they have to also be examined for what they represent. And we should be pivoted to free cash because there was the original offer, right? And we pivoted because of our interactions and our conversations with each board. And we adapted the best that we could to figure out how this could work for something that the community is asking for that was already promised. And that is where this is different than all of the others, and I think it's, it's tremendous in what it can do for our community and its sense of togetherness. And I really don't want you guys to discount.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question about what happened in twenty twenty-three. Uh, I think it was twenty twenty-three. Um, that a one-time, uh,
So.
Something had happened, and I think it was a one-time situation, and now I feel as though we're in a difficult situation because that one-time tax refund was allowed. And it misled the community into thinking that it was something they were entitled to, um, including all parents of all children and all the, you know, every. Um, it led to a misunderstanding of, of, by folks not understanding how it all came to pass and what it was for. And I'm concerned about doing the exact same thing over again and history repeating itself, doing a one-time tax refund, which is going to set precedent for, like, just what happened in twenty twenty-three. Um, and misled community members into thinking that it was something that was owed to them, entitled to them. I also appreciate that there were a lot of people that signed a petition. I just, you know, that's one portion of the community. We have a large senior community. And I don't know how the seniors would feel about all the kindergarten parents getting a tax refund, um, which is essentially what it is. So I, those are my concerns and.
Right, so what happened in the, in the spring of twenty-three, and it happened in the spring, is, is town hall worked with the school department, um, the school was talking about budget priorities and what needed to be done. And there was a very strong sentiment going, going back years, really, how do we get to a point where half-day, the, the second half of the day of kindergarten is tuition-free? And the, um, school business manager had indicated that the state through DSE, through chapter seventy money, if, so the way they count enrollment is, um, if it's a, if it's a half-day student, it doesn't count as a whole student. But if, if you have full day without tuition, that counts as a student, so essentially the number would double. So that our allocation from the state would double. And so in working, because I think it was, so I, I wasn't on school committee then. So in working through that process, the town said, okay, well, to get us through the hump until the, the state can count the full number of students, we'll do a one-time allocation for, for that budget. And then the state will kick in the, the difference the following year and every year thereafter. Well, the state didn't do it.
Okay.
So the state.
I, I, I don't know.
I, I honestly, I, I, I don't, I don't recall either. I, I, I don't know if they.
Does anybody know? Does anybody up here know why the state didn't do it?
Um, Ms. Stugan has her hand up. She might remember.
So there are paths, you know, of, of chapter seventy money that are above and beyond just the living of the people on the path of the bowl. And it's based on the socioeconomic of each community. And so what the business manager of the school did not appreciate in doing that calculation is that we were not going to get a one-to-one dollar,
Yeah.
grant back from the state because we have seventy money because Waha City and other communities of our socioeconomic profile are basically capped at a certain level when it comes to the chapter seventy calculation. The chapter seventy calculation is something that frankly, we, like, PhD in after physics, understand. Um, in terms of the complexity, but the reality is that, the, the simple understanding of that equivalent from half, you know, half-student or full-student, it's going to equate to all of those dollars. It doesn't work out that way in terms of.
Does it equate to any of the dollars?
No back and forth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. So just, we shouldn't have a back and forth here, okay, within the audience.
So I would just say that I agree with Ms. Latanzi regardless of this and the fact that it's a one-time. If the community at large felt that, that they didn't understand that, that this was going to be a given going forward, that is the result of the communication from the leadership at the town at the time that that was determined. It wasn't through any other reason. And so I would urge you guys to put this out there for all of the reasons that we have all said. And I feel that there is plenty of room within the budget based on all of the things that Will has brought forward, where we could look so that we would want to consider this. And while there's some, um, you know, we're talking about absolutely shrinking the free cash for this year, it sounds like we've got other projects that are doing really, really, really well, and maybe we can capture some of that catch. And this is, this is a tax on a very small portion of our community. And although I was not personally involved, it is my understanding that a large number of the signatories on the ballot were actually seniors within the community. I think there will be people in every area that are going to have differing views.
Okay.
Fact is, you've got a, enough people to get in on the ballot. And you have a school committee that's saying, we may or may not do what the town wants, and we need to know. I think it's worth it.
Okay, so, um, does the, does the board want to make a vote now, or do they want to, do we want to wait till special town meeting?
I'm comfortable voting.
Okay. All right. Everyone comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion to recommend to special town meeting Article twelve citizens petition tuition-free full-day kindergarten?
If I could just clarify, I'm sorry. It will still be on the warrant for town meeting.
Of course.
This is only the select board's recommendation.
To town meeting, correct.
It will still be a vote at town meeting. Citizens will not be silent. They will be able to vote at town meeting. This is just select board's recommendation. It is not binding of the town. Thank you.
Okay. So the way I worded the motion is to, to recommend to special town meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Okay. Um, uh, an aye vote is to affirm the recommendation, a nay vote is to not recommend. So, all in favor?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Okay. So I think, um, I think we'll, we'll hear on, we'll, we'll hear on special town meeting floor. And I look forward to everyone's comments and, and conversation on it. Okay. So discussion of potential speakers. Many of these are pretty perfunctory articles.
Even though some are complete.
We'll go through them.
Yeah, go through them.
Okay. So Article one is creation of a revolving fund for the cohesive community market. So this is necessary because the volunteers that used to run, um, the, um, oh, what was it? The, the market on the common? What was it called? No, no, no. What it used to be, the farmer's market. Thank you, thank you. Um, they retired and, um, so the town stepped in to keep this, this project going. And so the creation of the revolving fund is just to ensure that any money's taken in. We'll go back into the expenses of the community market. Um, unless and until we get some volunteers to step up who wish to take it over. So I don't know if anyone wants to speak on that. Nope. Okay. Raider will be unhappy and who else? Here it is. So Article two is unpaid bills of previous years. This is pretty standard. This, this list is a little bit more than it has been in the past. Uh, we voted to approve all of these. They cross over from DPW, the treasurer collector facilities and human resources. Uh, does anyone want to speak on that?
Usually the town manager does on that one. So
Right.
I don't know if we, if we need us to do that unless there's any question.
Okay. I mean, I, I can, I can answer any questions, um, on this if, if need be. I don't think we need to get up and opine on it. Article three is a stabilization funds. This is, um, the deposit to the OPEC trust fund. Four hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This fulfills our fiscal year obligation uh, in, um, terms of our financial policy. Um, I'm guessing Mr. Davis or Ms. Dugan will get up and speak on that. I don't think we need to. Unless someone wants to. Uh, capital improvement projects, um, there are, there's one for water and one from sewer from retained earnings out of their enterprise funds. Um, and this is what the beauty of an enterprise fund is you can use your retained earnings to fund capital. So it doesn't come out of the, uh, townwide capital stabilization fund. Two projects there. And then there's two projects out of the general fund. Uh, we watched capital last night. Uh, Michelle, they seem pretty.
Susan Franklin's prepared to speak on this?
Yeah.
We, 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 we should get somebody from the water to speak on it too. Just basic on that. Because there, there's been some water issues in town, you know, where, where they sent out the notice regarding some issues. And so I think there might, there might be questions on town meeting floor about, you know, with the water department. So I think for them to explain how, you know, creating these new lagoon or creating this new sludge lagoons and, you know, that's one of the, the pieces of the puzzle going forward.
And it's a big amount of money.
It is a big amount. I, I think water should speak. I think we, we could say one or two, nothing big, but I just think we could. I'll, I'll, I'll speak if you want on this one.
Okay.
But water.
Tracy, would you reach out to someone on the water commission?
Yeah. Brian, he is present to speak on it as well if needed.
Should he just speak on both of them then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We'll just have Brian. Okay. And the general fund, um, Michelle just indicated Susan will speak, um, on that if necessary. Did you, um, make the change capital last night? Asked about the language on?
We sent that to label councils.
Okay. Capital was concerned about the, the language in the motion not really matching up to the fact that this is a shift from the electric bus lease to the diesel bus lease. Okay. Article five is the Joseph Osca elementary school roof under MSBA. I'm happy to speak on this. Um, I, I would hope maybe someone from the schools would speak on it. Okay. I think they're prepared to answer questions, but maybe not get up and advocate for it.
Reach out to the superintendent and see.
Yeah.
Somebody should speak from schools for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe mention their rise in utility costs and why this is so important.
Yeah.
Right. Whoever's managing that, but are involved in managing that budget and understanding how much utilities are, uh, might be a good person to do that.
Yeah, it would either be the superintendent or the, um, chair, chair of the school committee. Um, and also they had concern about the language in the motion not reflecting. Okay, thank you.
I don't think we're going to be able to change that language, but.
They, yeah. So, so the, the language in the motion didn't indicate that the funding from the town side would come from the school stabilization fund. However, MSBA is very particular about the language used in your articles and in your motions. So, um, council is just going to reflect to make sure that we are compliant with MSBA language. And certainly it can be talked about where the money is coming from and it's in the warrant. Okay. Article six, creation of an enterprise fund for the recycling transfer facility. Michelle had reached out to me today. Should we have some slides? I think, um, I think the financial statement. And I don't know if we can just do a rough FY twenty seven forecast. Um, that's in the back. Oh, it's not in the back of, of the motions of the warrant, but, um, it's been presented to us a lot and it's up on the, the town website. But I think we should have that financial statement to show. And I think we should also have the chart that, um, is in the back of the warrant, the fees for the RTF with and without the enterprise fund.
Exactly.
Oh.
I know this is on order, but can I speak for a second?
Sure. Sure.
I'll be very brief on this very quick. The Antarpie twelve face lane, um, is currently envisioned. I don't support it. No surprise there, I don't think. Uh, given what has occurred this evening, I would make an off-the-wall recommendation, if it's possible, that you pull it from the warrant and bring it back up at the next annual town meeting. Because it's going to have a hard time getting passed for lack of governance. A citizens advisory board notwithstanding. What we need is a real enterprise fund, much like the sewer commission and the water commission with elected commissioners. That might get it passed, given its murky origins. But I don't think it'll pass, and it's just me speaking, without some sort of real governance, much like the enterprise funds that we already have. Again, I don't know if that can happen or not, but I would ask that you consider it. And then the interim, put it back on an annual town meeting. And since the framework of developing an elected board of commissioners for an enterprise fund exists already, we're not reinventing the wheel. That, that be put in motion between now and then, with elections for RTF commissioners, so to speak, following further after. The only person, and I follow this very carefully, throughout the whole process, who objected to that type of governance has left the building. And I'm not saying anything right, right or wrong, but the rationale that was given at the time was not compelling. Um, and kind of opaque. Uh, it, it seemed to serve another purpose. You'd be doing your select board, future select boards and the town, the service, if you set this up under an elected board of commissioners. That would make it viable for the long term. Just my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tarpe. Okay. Yes, Mr. Farak.
Comments. I'm just thinking out loud, so I'm not taking a position on it. But I would just say with, it, the difference is, is the sewer commission and the water commission are by statute. And the reason, and they've been around for years. The, the, the water department has been around for decades, if not almost millennia. So it's totally different in the sense of the size and scope of, of their operation. Where if we did like an advisory board, it then, you know, it, it purports to select board for then making those decisions. Because if you have, it, it, we have trouble trying to get people to run for office as it is. So if you're going to get five new elected positions to just be on the dump board or the RTF board, I don't know how attractive that's going to be. And and I think that I don't, I don't know if we want to relinquish that um, in order to manage it correctly. Um, I do think an advisory board, where board is definitely needed because they can do a lot of gut work to bring things back um, for the town and also, you know, have the, the, the new town manager be able to deal with it. And I think if you've seen the strives that, that it's taken, I, I think to, to, to punt it to that, I don't know if that's going to be the, the, the right way. I think it can be debated, you know, in, in the community, but I don't know if, if a commission with it because it's because of the size of it. If that, if that would be appropriate. Uh, and then, then finally with it, I think that going forward, we need to look at, uh, you know, the management, but getting it in advisory board, which would include citizens and it would have the, the people who actually, you know, help manage it. That's, that's very important to get their two cents in, in the, in the management of it. Since we have a manager there already now. So that's all. But that's just thinking out loud, playing devil's advocate. I'm not taking a position either way at this point.
Any other comments?
We did discuss, I'll keep this brief and short, but it has been brought up about getting a citizen involved in, in the RTF. My only thought with the RTF right now is primarily is a no-brainer. It really is. You know, we've got to think outside the box. And that is self-sustaining operation. I think what we need, I was going to ask if we have a three-year projection. I thought Chris had maybe done that, uh, three-year cost analysis is what it's going to do. Not just a year. Because things change. But it's pretty much a key component in how we're going to be moving forward. I understand the reticence, but this I know. And Chair put up the proposed fees. We have no choice. It'll be right back in front of the select board a week after town meeting, looking at fee increases that we have to make. Because we're still sending sixty-one cents of every dollar back into the schools. And we still have to run the RTF because the people seem to want it. So that's the big problem. I, to me personally, I don't understand why anybody would be jumping all over it, but that's, that's okay. That's just me personally. But that's where, but I do think we should have to present, uh, you know, say a three-year revenue projection as to what it's going to bring in, how it's going to sustain itself. Where some of the capitals, the chairs, capital expenditures can go back, um, we can do steamroller or compactor or something like that. Um, and, and it's taking off. I don't disagree with having some town oversight. You know, um, and, you know, as a committee, I don't know about charging him, but let them, but we have Frank up there. You would have him delegates and people like that and may a select board representative. I would, I would go along with that. I'll tell you that. I'd support it.
I would agree. Uh, however, again, this is a long-term thing. This is going to last for decades and it should not be personality. I'm not afraid for a lot of years. He's closer to my age than anybody else. You're not going to have, God willing, he's with us for a long time, but you know, the sands of time are running out, you know, it's for all of us at some point or other. Um, Mr. Farak is a great, uh, person to, to be involved with us. But again, thirty years from now, this is still an ongoing thing. It's been talked about that it's too small. Well, it was six hundred fifty thousand dollars in FY twenty-five. It's eight hundred some thousand dollars in FY twenty-six. Who knows what it's going to be three years from now. It's going to, what's it going to make? So it's not too small to have an elected, uh, board of commissioners. We have one time to get this right. And there's been a lot of discussion about it before. And pretty much at the end of town meeting, from what I got, a lot of comments is people, the problem people have with it was there was no business plan at that time. Which is, which was obviously a problem. And there was no governance that people would be happy. And the comments that I heard involved having the elected board of commissioners. And I defer to Mr. Farak's knowledge of the statutory requirements, but it can be done.
Okay. All right. So, um, it's kind of leaving, oh, Mr. Plex.
Sorry to belabor this.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Tarpe that the reason this didn't pass the last time we had it at town meeting was we didn't have sufficient business plan, explain the governance, tell me how this is all going to work. The person who I thought was going to cover this is recently resigned. So now I'm, I'm worried about how we're going to do Q and A on this at a town meeting. Unless there's someone else who's sufficiently up to speed on the plan.
Okay. I'm very familiar with all the documents and, and the fee structures and, and the income statement that's generated. I would just ask if we get another year tacked on. It's got history. It's got FY twenty-six. We could get FY twenty-seven on it.
I think this should be three years because if you have an enterprise fund, it, it has to come in for a minimum of three years.
Okay.
So that way when, when people say you're doing enterprise fund, it's for three years.
Yeah.
Um, there you go.
So if we could get, get Beth and Brian just to, to roll out some, some numbers with some basic assumptions, you know, realistic. Mr. Grady.
And in that interim period of time, we do codify a committee. I'm not going to say elected, uh, Mr. Tarpe. I think you're just complicating the issue, but you know, we do have committees, we do have boards, we have people that serve on boards. I think there'd be some people in town that'll be interested as time rolls on. I think we'll have other people that'll be interested as a managerial post who's running the RTF is automatically on it anyway.
I disagree with that. I, I don't want to belabor this anymore. I think citizens, if I can put you made up entirely of citizens. Mr. Farag being the select board liaison, the people who, um, managing the operations, the, you know, the great people, they're already reporting this. I think that like advisory and other citizens board issue made up entirely of citizens, they're going to go down.
It's not a bad idea.
Say that it's going to mirror the part of the sewer, which if it mirrors the part of the sewer, it means a commission.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't say it's going to mirror. No. No, okay. Says to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three F and a half to establish an enterprise fund for the town's recycling transfer facility effective January one, twenty twenty-six, or take any other action relative thereto. Informational summary says this article will create an enterprise fund for the recycling transfer facility, allowing for actual costs for operation to be balanced against the actual revenue, uh, received for providing services. This is the same model. Okay. So I see where you're going. User fees paying for user surface as the water and sewer.
I think it's, but it's referring to the financial.
It's referring to the financial model where, where the users pay for the services. I understand why you thought that, but that was. Okay. But, but in all our conversations, we never, we never discussed it in all the forums. So anyways, let's get back to this, um, because it's, it's getting quite late here. Um, so Mr. Farak, do you want to speak to it or do you want me to speak to it?
I think you should speak to it. You know, the ins and the outs of the, uh,
Okay.
The amounts. And then I think with, with the, uh, the plan, that would be good. But I do think it should be announced. It, it, you know, that it, our, our advisory.
Yeah.
We call it advisory committee and, you know, the makeup of it and that that's the governance plan. At least unless it changes from now until then, but
Yeah.
Um, and because at that town meeting, at least if you announce it then, then you can see what people want to be involved with it.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right.
Might it be helpful to have Brian Joyce available to speak on this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brian and Frank are prepared to speak.
They're prepared.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Article seven amendments to fiscal twenty twenty-six operating budget. I mean, we've, we've been through it. I, I can talk about it. It's pretty clear. Um, allocation of funds for one-time costs. There's, yeah, no, there's, there's nothing exciting there. The only, um, one I'm not a hundred percent familiar with. Michelle is the all facilities permit end-user purchasing module and permit fulfillment solution, which I know the town. which I know the town clerk has recommended. So if maybe she could get, get me a little write-up. I'm very familiar with the other three. So this is to dovetail onto a recent change in Mass General Law, which allows an existing malt and wine license to apply for an alcohol on-premise license. It's a new state law and allows us to do the same thing. That's pretty straightforward. Article nine, Article ten is pretty straightforward. Article eleven. Release of School Property for Sighting of a Solar Power Electric Generation Facility. Anyone? Anyone? Paris?
We should, we should.
Bueller, bueller.
We should get the, the school, the school should be up, up there for the solar power for sure, and maybe even the alternative energy.
Yeah.
And you know, explaining what the process is post that, if, you know, even though it's just a redo of the.
I, I know, I know, well, Tanya would, if she's available. Okay.
If not her, someone else in the committee, if she can't come to that meeting, because.
Okay, and then Article twelve. Hey, Crickets. No one wants to talk in Article twelve. Okay.
I'm happy to speak to you.
Okay. We'll put you down, Mr. Grady.
You got me for four, right?
Yeah.
Capital.
No, I don't have you for four.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to say one thing.
Oh, okay.
Because we wanted the water commission too, even though Brian and.
Okay. Okay, that's it. So, um. Okay. Discussion of the Holiday Lights. Oh, my gosh, it's late. My gosh, it's late. Yeah, okay.
No, we're going to, we're going to go through it all. I mean, what, I mean, the Concom has a four-and-a-half-hour meeting. We can certainly finish with this.
I'm up at four-thirty.
Ditto.
Yeah.
Okay, so i- in a nutshell, you know, the, the town does, the facilities department does all the lights on the common. Do they do down through the village, or do the proprietors do the village?
Proprietors do the village.
Proprietors do the village. And it has come up that based on the current workload of the facilities department in town hall and in other places, this is going to be a challenge. And I, I begged and borrowed to see if, you know, well, actually I asked a few questions.
So, so to answer your questions, you did ask how much time they dedicate to, to doing the lights? And if that's, if all staff members are completely dedicated to this project, it takes five days.
Five-eight-hour days?
Yes.
And all staff members from facilities?
Correct.
So that's four.
Four full-time staff.
Okay.
And what, sorry, so that I understand, what is this involved putting up the lights in town and the Christmas tree?
Decorating the entire town common.
At the common.
And the section by the veterans.
Oh, right, right, right.
So it's dedicated five days with all the disruption. It does take them up to two weeks to get it done.
Disruptions meaning weather, disruptions meaning emergencies, disruptions meaning people are sick.
All of the above.
Okay, so, so that's five eights is forty times four is a hundred and sixty man-hours.
And it's something that they have enjoyed doing for many years. It's just they're, they're strapped now. And they feel so they won't be able to decorate as much as they have in the past with the limited time that they have. So you'll, you'll get your tree on the pond, which was new, which is something that they brought to the community. You'll get the large tree lit, but as far as stringing lights around, as they have been the past years, I think that'll be challenging.
So why this year?
There's so many projects going on that they are taking point on, that it's extremely challenging for them to get it done.
Can I know what those projects are? Like just, do I have a taste of?
So, so town hall being number one.
Yeah, they're working on town hall.
They're also involved in the library pavilion project. And, you know, there's just constant things happening at the school. And it's a time for a lot of the staff to take vacation. So unfortunately, with all of those items, they feel pressed for time.
So the option then is there's a resource that could do it for eighteen thousand dollars, correct?
And how long would it take them to do it?
Um, two days.
Exactly. I, I'm sorry, but I think this, this estimate is just them saying they don't want to do it.
The eighteen thousand?
The company? No, no.
No, the town, the employees, the town. Because if we get somebody else to do it, which we wouldn't for the eighteen thousand, because I know when we did it, being on the Cohasset Chamber of Commerce, when we did downtown lights, I know it was very expensive to get an electrician to come through the town to do it for the, for the stroll. And, and it was, it was like ten, fifteen thousand at the time, which was years ago. But it took them like that to do it. So for them to come and say it's going to take them eight days, five, whatever it is, a hundred and sixty man-hours to put stuff on the common that they've done for years. I'm sorry, I'm.
I just want to be careful how we characterize this, because ultimately, we do want a solution of some form. So, Ellen, would we consider prioritizing certain spaces, spurt and trees? And asking the town facilities department to work it that way and see what you can get done with the understanding that these are the priorities?
Um, yeah, I, I, I think we would be open to anything. I think it's, you know, to me, it's something that's quintessential Cohasset. And if it sets back the library pavilion project going into the dead of winter, which won't be utilized for a little while, and, and, and school, school maintenance work comes up all the time. Okay, it's come up every year when they have been able to do it. So let's take that one off the table. Vacations, I, I don't know what cadence they've been in the past. I don't know if all of a sudden now there's vacation time coming up during, during the season. And how far back would it set back the work on town hall?
I don't know that it's going to set the work back. I just don't think you're going to have the oversight that you likely want on the project. But what, what I, I would say is that if we, we instruct the facilities department to start now versus starting whenever they normally start, they just chip away at it over time. And, you know, not ideal, it's going to cost us a lot more money with the lift. But.
Oh, to rent it, to keep it rented for that.
Oh.
The schools have.
All the lift stuff on one day? Um, I don't know if this is feasible, but could you schedule the lift for one day and not have it there in dribs and drabs?
So we typically keep it for a week because it's less expensive to keep it for a week than it is for a day or two?
Yeah.
So what if we were to hit the high-hanging fruit starting out? We have the lift for the week that we usually do it. We get the high-hanging fruit, and the rest we can pluck, they can pluck away at. You know, before Christmas, we fire it up.
When do we do the tree lighting? When do we do the tree?
It's usually the night of the stroll that we just approved.
Yeah, okay, so, right, so.
So, yeah, if a, if a solution is to start now, I, I would start now. And, and chip away at it.
I mean, I'm, I'm speaking for them. I don't, you know, I don't make here.
Good constructive solution, so thank you for bringing it up.
Chip away.
Yeah, get started.
Everyone else has started getting ready for the holidays. They started in September.
It's definitely an expectation of the community that we have it. I mean, that's why we have the town common. It's the center of the universe here. So, I mean, it's an expectation, the town, that this gets done. But, but like I said before, I'm sorry, the estimate that's given, I, I just think it's, I, I think it's BS. I really do. I mean, we've had, we've had, like I said, I know with the stroll, we've had them put it up in less than two days. And to say it's going to take five or ten or whatever, a hundred and forty man-hours is just, you know, I realize there's vacations and things. I can totally understand that. And that can, if you're doing it, you know, in December, that could, that's, that could definitely be a problem. But it, it, I, I'll ask people before, how long did it take? There's no way that it took this, this long to put them up.
Okay.
And like I said, it just looks like that they're, you know, this, this is the thing that you get when you get a, a bid from somebody, you know, a landscape or something, and they really don't want to do the job, or they'll do the job for the highest price, and they give you the, the, the screw-you price. That's what we're getting is the screw-you price with this.
I.
So.
But that's not from our.
I would just say that I'm going to put.
No, no, not the eighteen thousand. I'm talking about the number of man-hours that it takes to put lights in the common.
I don't appreciate you characterizing it as a screw-you price from town employees. I don't think that's fair.
They work hard, so maybe we can help them along. So I don't characterize it. I think especially working on town halls and stuff like that, they're busting a check. But feel them out, and you know, if we could start tomorrow, for instance, and chip away. It's just, you know, it'd be great if everybody could write a check and say, yeah, here's your eighteen thousand dollars of tree lighting company, come on in. I get it. It's just, it's not there.
Well, like I said, I won't get into their thing, but let the record show that if you're going to do it privately, it takes two days to put them up. There you go.
Okay. All right, the annual fireworks for July second.
Yep, for, I believe the date that was secured was on July second. The reason we're here is to talk about funding mechanism. So we set up there, in the, the committee is in the process of setting up a five oh one three C. So the fundraising efforts will be easier this year versus past years, where we're funneling it through MyRec and some, some other different accounts through Unipay. And it was challenging because people would have to set up an account, and then you didn't maximize your donations. Their, Craig McCollum specifically has already set up all of the statutes for the five oh one three C. He sent those along. He's working on actually setting up the tax ID, so that's moving along nicely. We're hoping to have that all set by January. The reason we're here is typically we have to put a deposit down. That deposit is for twenty-five thousand dollars. We're looking to put that deposit down, but then reimburse the town, because we don't have that funding just yet. But it's similar to what we've done in years past. The town has put down the deposit and been reimbursed by the fundraiser.
Okay, and the deposit is due?
Um, the deposit will be due on February first.
Okay.
We get time on this.
So, so we have time, but can I just have a sense of the board that everyone's okay?
I'm supporting you, but.
I'm fully supportive.
Okay.
I think a town tradition is a nice one.
I would bring up to everybody that this summer is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the country on July fourth, so it's not just any regular July fourth. So. And we should also ask as a part of it, maybe whatever the, if their historical society has anything that they're going to be doing in connection with this.
Okay, I do, I do believe this date is locked in with the, the vendor. I mean, if everyone, if everyone is in agreement, we might as well just make a motion to authorize twenty-five thousand dollar deposit to the fireworks vendor for ultimate reimbursement back to the town.
Oh, yeah.
So, so Mr. Grady moved it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Plex seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And we just don't have to revisit it. Okay. Michelle, do you have any update? Nope. Okay, any select board comments? Mr. Grady?
No. Going to heck my mind.
Mr. Plex?
Nothing for me tonight.
Mr. Farag?
Just briefly, because I know we all want to go. It's been a long night and a lot of things have happened, but I'll just let people know that, you know, we want to, that, that the town has been through a lot of things, through its history, it's been through a civil war, multiple wars, the Great Depression, things like that. And so whatever issues that face the town, you know, they pale in significance to what the town has been through before. So whatever the obstacles are, we will get through them and we'll carry on and we'll get through them all together. We might not agree about everything all the time, but the, at the end of the day, we are one town and we will carry on. So thank you.
Mrs. Rollins, nothing, and nothing for me. So can I have a, a motion to approve the minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty-five? I did. Okay, Mr. Grady made a motion. May I have a second? The minutes of October seventh are, Mr. Plex was absent, so he'll have to abstain. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Farag seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, that's four zero one. Thank you. So at ten oh seven PM, can I have a motion to adjourn? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So we will.